Good evening and welcome. Tonight is Monday, September 29th, 2025. This is a regular meeting of the Minnetoka City Council. I will call this meeting to order and ask you to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ms. Larson, would you please call roll?
Calvert?
Here.
Remaley?
Here.
Coakley?
Here.
Foster Bolton?
Sorry, here.
Shaq?
Here.
Wilburn?
Here.
Weersum?
Here. Next item is approval of the agenda, and it looks like we have an addendum. Mr. Funk?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. One addenda item for your consideration. Looking to add an agenda item, so this will be 15B for an Economic Development Advisory Commission appointment. And so we're looking to add an appointment. Mayor Weersum and/or I could speak to that later on 15B. And so with that addenda, the recommended action is to move to approve the agenda with the addition of 15B, which would be for the Economic Development Advisory Commission appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Funk. Councilmember Remaley?
So moved.
Is there a second? Councilmember Calvert?
Second.
All right. A motion by Councilmember Remaley and a second by Councilmember Calvert. Ms. Larson, please call roll.
Calvert?
Yes.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Weersum?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is approval of minutes, and we have three sets. The first is the July 21, 2025 study session minutes. The second is the August 18, 2025 study session minutes. And the third is the September 8, 2025 regular meeting minutes. I think we can do those all at once. Councilmember Calvert?
Thank you, Mayor. I move approval of the July 21, 2025 study session minutes, the August 18, 2025 study session minutes, and the September 8 regular meeting minutes.
Is there a second? Councilmember Remaley?
Second.
All right. A motion by Councilmember Calvert and a second by Councilmember Remaley. Excuse me. Ms. Larson, please call roll.
Calvert?
Yes.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Weersum?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is special matters, and we have none of those tonight, which takes us to reports from city manager and council members. Mr. Funk, you get to go first.
Again, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Just a few things for you here this evening. First, it is time for our submittals, or I guess I'm throwing out, submittals for our 2025 Minnetoka photo contest. So we do that every year. We love to see the photos that best represent the city. We are putting that out on our social media channels, and we are taking submissions through October 8, and we'll announce those winners in November. Just as a reminder, winning photos will be featured on the city's website, our social media accounts, the Minnetoka memo, and then we will recognize our first place winners at an upcoming council meeting. And we do use some of those photos around City Hall. Some of our conference rooms have some of those really unique photos that are captured throughout the year. So again, encourage anyone to submit their photos. And then pivoting to the recent storms, as you know, we had some hail damage rip through parts of our community. We've received a number of phone calls at City Hall just regarding solicitors. Just as a reminder to residents that we do track those here at City Hall, so anyone that might be out looking for roofing business, they do need to get a solicitor's license here at the city. We do issue those ID cards, so they're clearly identifiable. I think Ms. Wishnek, I think last count was probably over 50 different vendors that have come forward looking to do solicitation in the city. And so those are listed on our website. So anyone that has a question or any resident has a question on who our solicitors are, go to our website. That list is updated, and so anyone can check out who is valid and who is not. And if there's concerns, always call the city, and we will make sure we respond to any questions that folks have. Tomorrow night, it's hard to believe that is end of the summer season, but it is our last day of the farmers market, so Tuesday, September 30, from 2 to 6 is our last day. So encourage anyone to come out and visit our last farmers market of the year. This winter, we'll certainly do our winter's farmer market, but at least with the summer farmers market that's ending here tomorrow. And then just a note here from our senior services, really cool event that they have coming up. This really kind of in ways relates back to our community survey. If you look at our community survey and our demographics, a third of Minnetoka residents plan to live in our city for over 30 years. And so we know it's a place that people call home. It's a place that people want to stay throughout their life. And so our senior services and our senior advisory board have a fair opportunity coming up called the Senior Housing Fair. That's going to be tomorrow as well, Tuesday, September 30, from 10 to noon here at the Minnetoka Community Center. It's a free event, no registration is required, and we encourage anyone to come and check out more what senior services has to offer. We've mentioned last council meeting that it is voting time, so absentee voting is taking place for Minnetoka elections and school board elections. The absentee is in person, so that's here at the Minnetoka Community Center during our regular business hours from now until November 3. And then any absentee also can be done by mail, and folks can go to our website to do that as well. And then last, another exciting event coming up is the Fire Department and Annual City House Event. That's always a great event. We pull in usually a few thousand people based on the hot dogs that are eaten. So that is Tuesday, October 7, from 5 to 7:30 here at City Hall Campus. And we really kind of promote at the fire station, but we have activities throughout our entire campus. Again, we'll have our fire truck rides, our hot dogs, inflatables, lots of things to drink in terms of cocoa and others, and lots of stuff for the kids. It's really meant to be family friendly, so we encourage any of our families to come out and visit us for that event. With that, Mayor, I'll turn back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Funk. Certainly a lot of things going on. Councilmembers, do you have anything that you would like to report? Councilmember Calvert?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to report that some of us went to the Minnetoka Hopkins Chili Cook-Off, and I actually do not know the results of who won the cook-off.
Yes.
Minnetoka Police, all right. And it was for a wonderful cause. It was a beautiful day. They had music. They had six different kinds of chili. And I really, this is something that happens every year, this time of year. It was at Faith Church Parking Lot, and I highly encourage people to go because it supports ICA food shelf. So I just want to thank everybody that put it together and congratulate the police department. I'm so glad it was Minnetoka Police Department, and it was a wonderful time, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Calvert. Is there anyone else? Councilmember Calvert?
Sorry, I have one more thing to say.
Okay.
So that's the happy stuff. There have been some really, really just gut-wrenching events in our country once again, and it seems like it is almost a daily occurrence. And, you know, it seems to me that some of the people that are, two of the last crimes, one in Michigan and I think one was in North Carolina, were perpetrated by veterans who are clearly mentally ill. And I just want to encourage people that are feeling lonely and desperate that there are resources out there to help you. Your community wants to be there to help you, and I really think that we have to find a way to help people resolve their issues through something other than horrific violence. So I just am sending my very best thoughts to all of the affected people, and I really hope that our country can find a way forward in peace.
Great. Councilwoman Coakley?
Thank you, Mayor. So last week, I went to Mary Mardiotti, Hennepin County Attorney, listening session on non-public safety traffic stops. This was held on the 24th in Minneapolis. And I went to that listening session. She was partnering with Valerie Castile, and that is Philandro mother, who was, Philandro was murdered in St. Paul by St. Paul Police. I don't know how many--
Actually, St. Anthony Village.
Okay, St. Anthony Village, okay. I don't know how many years ago that was, but it was some years ago. But anyway, his mom was there, and she talked about why it was so important for these stops to be not prosecuted. And I learned a little bit more about why Mary stated that she didn't go partner with, I guess, police across other cities. She talked to the community about why that didn't happen. And so I would just say, for me, I think it's important that we continue to partner with the Hennepin County Attorney's Office and have these conversations and share more of the information more publicly that these conversations are happening. From what I heard and seen, I can't really say, because I haven't heard our side of the story from our city perspective, just I saw two public news release, but press conferences, but not really knowing all the details or verifying it with city staff. So I can't really say what conversations was had or haven't had, but from what she stated, that she did try to reach out and have conversations in the past, then at some point the conversations ended. And so there was a lot of community questions around it, but when Valerie Castile stated why it was important to her, it really reminded me of a situation that I experienced in Minnetoka with my daughter. She was stopped so many times, it's unbelievable. And we did have a conversation with one of our folks who was serving on a D I with the chief, Chief Barboom. And so we had the conversation, and my daughter, as an adult, older adult, was able to express how she felt living in Minnetoka and all the stops that she had. And I remember specifically on this day, on my wedding night, my daughter was pulled over, and she was arrested. And she was arrested and went to jail that night on my wedding day. And so I'll never forget that. That's going to forever stand in my mind because that happened to her. And she did get a chance to talk about it later. And I think that we really should take this into consideration because I know a lot of folks do get pulled over, and it's usually black and brown folks who are targeted for some of these stops. And, you know, it's not, it's not a made-up thing. This is really happening and has happened. And so I just would encourage us to continue the conversation with Mary and her staff. And, you know, I know that our city is doing a really good job, and we've put a lot of things in place over the years, but I would just encourage us to continue to partner and work together as the same conversation I basically had with Mary. I asked her, why didn't you communicate with our chief or communicate with other chiefs across the different 38 cities that wasn't involved? And she had her reason. So I would just say I encourage everyone to continue to have a conversation and partner. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Coakley. Other comments?
All right, I've got a couple, and I want to correct my correction. Actually, with the tragic death of Philandro Castile, that was the St. Anthony Village Police Department, but it happened in Falcon Heights, as I believe that is correct. So it was that PD where that occurred. So, you know, on a related note, as I've mentioned before, I attended the press conference regarding guns that Mayor Frye and Mayor Carter held, and I participated in that because I think gun violence is an issue that deserves our attention. And we, I just wanted to mention that Representative Aikum and Senator Ann Johnson Stewart are going to have a town hall here at the community center on October 16, and they've asked me to moderate that, so I will be involved. And I think it's, I think it's an important conversation. You know, as is the case in such a divided age, things that just seem to be pretty straightforward are never straightforward and have gotten really politicized. But I think, I think there are actions that need to be taken to help at least take a step toward mitigating the tragedy of gun violence that exists in our society. And as Councilmember Calvert indicated, we keep getting reminded of that every day in all different places, in houses of worship, in schools, and so many places, in stores, we just can't imagine it. And we've got to break this cycle of violence. And I don't think there's one thing that can solve it. I think it's many, many things, and everyone who says it's not this, it's that, well, it is that, but you can't say it's not this because it's all of the above. And so we as leaders do have a role to play, and so I'm happy to be involved in that event. You know, I just want to comment on the Chili Cook-Off. It was a beautiful day, and it was great participation. It was great to have residents there, and it was great to have our police department, our fire department, our shared Hopkins Minnetoka Recreation Department, Hopkins Schools, Food Service, and police and fire from all our cities. So it was, who am I missing? Anyway, it was a great event, and it gets bigger every year, and I think it's a very successful fundraiser for ICA. So I was pleased to be there. And then on Thursday of last week, I attended the swearing-in of our two newest police officers, and they are Officer Taylor Havdi and Officer Shannon King. And we welcomed them to our police department. When I attend those, and I realize that this is the last one I will be able to attend as mayor, I will fess up. I got a little choked up because it's been a real privilege to welcome our new officers to our police department. And the chief and the city manager are gracious enough, gracious enough to let the mayor say a few words, but it was kind of emotional because I realized I'm not going to be doing this next year. So anyway, that was that. And then one other thing. I had a meeting this week with Rabbi Mordecai Grossbaum and a resident, Brian Badson, about the opening of the Habad Center in Minnetoka. And they, there was kind of a formal process there because they explained to me that according to Jewish law, and this is an Orthodox Jewish congregation, that the membership is not allowed to carry anything from outside that facility on the Sabbath. And so what they did, and they had a proclamation that they asked me to sign, they wanted to establish an eruv, E-R-U-V, so that that basically creates in a much larger area so that, according to Jewish law, they are able to carry things within the eruv to worship on the Sabbath. And correct me if I'm getting that wrong, but, so we had a meeting. They handed me a proclamation that I read and I signed. It was a mayoral proclamation and established, and so we did that. I wanted to make sure I mentioned it tonight. And then they also, according to Jewish law, needed to have a financial transaction, so they gave me $1 for that purpose, and I have, of course, turned that over to the city coffers, to the finance director. So we, I think we came out on that one all right. So I wanted to make sure that I mentioned it publicly because I think that was something that they requested of me to do. And that center is, you know, an important part of the lives of a lot of Minnetoka residents. So I just wanted to make sure that I stated that publicly. And with that, those are my comments for tonight, at least on that item. So the next item is citizens wishing to discuss matters not on the agenda, and this is an open-mic opportunity for anyone who has something that is not on our agenda that would like, and they would like to make residents, or us aware, the council aware, of their concern. And if you have something, please come forward, state your name and address, tell us what you want us to hear, and we will not take any action tonight, but we will ask staff to follow up, and then we will get a report on what happened on your item. So is there anyone who would like to come forward? Anyone? All right, seeing no one, we'll move on. Next item is bids and purchases, and we have one item tonight. That is bids for the 2025 sanitary sewer lining project.
Mr. Manchester? Thanks, Mayor and Council. Good evening for tonight of the bids for the 2025 sanitary sewer lining project. The motion tonight, recommended by staff, is to reject the bids for this project, project number 25908. It's related to our strategic plan through desired outcome 5.1 to improve the reliability and efficiency of the utilities and facilities. For some background, on July 28, 2025, council adopted a resolution that authorized us to order the improvements, accept the plans and specs, and then authorize the ad for bids. City staff annually conducts sewer televising as well as monitoring and metering just to look at the I and I throughout the city's system. And this project generally, on an annual basis, will propose to eliminate some of that I and I which gets into our system and costs the city more money to treat during heavy rain events. The area for the project was north of 394 to the west of Hopkins Crossroad. It did propose to utilize trencher's repair technology, so it's a cured-and-placed product that is sent through manholes essentially. This project proposed about 8,400 feet of existing 8-inch and 10-inch to line, so you essentially put a liner in the pipe and structurally make it new again. It had a number of segments such as Sunnyvale, Glendale, Park Lane, Oberlin, Lori Lane, Oberlin Park, along with another several segments through existing sewer evens. Most of the work is done through manholes, and then there are some small excavations that are required for the work. Bids were opened on August 28, 2025. We did only receive one bid, which is primarily the reason for staff's recommendation to reject bids. We like to make sure we have comparables in situations like this, so we are recommending council reject the bids, and we would come back in 2026, look at the scope of the project, kind of the market, and look how we can improve the environment by essentially looking at next year's work too as well, to see if they should be combined into one project. So it would be brought back to council for consideration in 2026 again if you do choose to move forward tonight with reject the bids. So the recommended action is to reject, motion to reject the bids for the 2025 sewer lining project number 25908. With that, I'll turn it back to the mayor and council for any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Manchester. Council questions for Mr. Manchester. Councilmember Calvert?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick one. Do we, do we sort of know why only one bid? And just following up, I mean, looking forward, is there a better time of year to bid it out?
Mr. Manchester?
Good question, Councilmember Calvert, mayor and council. We did call around to see, you know, we usually make phone calls just to see why folks didn't bid. What we heard was there's a lot of work out there, and their schedules were full, so to meet the schedule. Fall is a tougher time sometimes to bid because winter is coming. This work could be done in the winter, it just depends on the crews. And so spring is an ideal time to rebid, is what we heard, and more folks would be interested.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments or a motion? Councilmember Wilburn?
I move that we reject the bids for the 2025 sanitary sewer lining project number 25908.
Councilmember Calvert?
Second.
All right. We've got a motion by Councilmember Wilburn and a second by Councilmember Calvert. Ms. Larson, please call roll.
Calvert?
Yes.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Weersum?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is the consent agenda, and we have four items on the consent agenda. These are items that are typically routine. I will read them into the record, and we can vote on them in one motion and one action. If anyone would like to pull an item either in the audience or on the council, just indicate that, and we will pull that and consider it separately, voting on the items that have not been pulled first and then come back to the item or items that have been pulled. So item 10A is to amend an interim use permit for a portable classroom at Glen Lake Elementary School at 4801 Woodridge Road. Item 10B is a transfer of existing CDBG program income to Hennepin County. Item 10C is the 2026 Minnetoka City Council calendar, which I know is always a lot of work to get that pulled together. And then item 10D is a resolution appointing election judges and absentee ballot board for the November 4, 2025 municipal general election. So would anyone like to pull anything, or is there a motion? Councilmember Calvert?
Thank you, Mayor. I do move approval, but I just want to make one comment, and I want to thank our city clerk staff and all of the election judges and the absentee ballot board for stepping up and getting this done. It's literally, it's our democracy in action, and it makes me really proud to see that long list of election judges. So I'd like to move approval of consent agenda items 10A, B, C, and D.
And is there a second? Councilwoman Coakley?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to pull one, so consent item B.
Item B?
Yes.
Okay.
And I can make the motion to approve consent item A, C, and D.
Okay. All right. Well, we've got a motion, so if you can--
I can second.
All right, thank you. So, and then, and then Councilmember Calvert, we'll withdraw your motion on 10B until we hear from--
Yes.
Councilwoman Coakley. So with that, we have a motion from Councilmember Calvert on items 10A, C, and D, and a second by Councilwoman Coakley on items 10A, C, and D. Ms. Larson, please call roll.
Calvert?
Yes.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Weersum?
Yes, motion carries. And then, Councilwoman Coakley, you pulled item 10B, so what are your comments?
Yes. So I have a quick comment. I talked to Mike about this earlier today. I have, my comment is that, you know, the CDBG program is a good program. However, there's some, I feel like there's some problems with it for people who have low income, and particularly the people that's in the land trust housing. And I would like to maybe for the future, I know we can't do it now, but maybe in the future, add a conversation around, in the study session around, how do we assist people who have low income to get approved for this CDBG program? Because, you know, sometimes they deny folks if they don't meet all the requirements, and so I would like to add that maybe to a study session in the future to discuss how do we support people who have lower incomes, especially the land trust folks. do we support people who have lower incomes, especially the land trust folks. So.
So then with that, that's duly noted. I don't know if anyone, staff has any comments. Otherwise, Ms. Wishnak, do you, if you're prepared or would like to say something?
Thank you, Mayor. And council members, I think we talked about this at the last study session, I believe, in September, or September 8th it might have been. And we talked about visiting again about a program like that at a point which we're ready to present that we will come back to the council and ask that you review some information.
All right, so if I can conclude from your comments that we are doing what Councilmember Coakley already asked, so we're.
I think we're on it, yes.
A step ahead. Okay, that's good. Well, good, well, thank you for that. And Councilmember Coakley, if you'd like to make the motion on item 10B, that would be great.
I'll make the motion to approve consent item B.
Very good. And Councilmember Calvert?
I second.
All right, we've got a motion by Councilmember Coakley on item 10B and a second by Councilmember Calvert. Ms. Larson, please call roll.
Calvert?
Yes.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Weersum?
Yes, motion carries. Item 11 is consent agenda items requiring five votes, and we have two of those tonight. And they're both grant, they're both public safety grant items. The first is item 10, or 11A, excuse me, is the DWI Traffic Safety Officer Grant Agreement. And item 10B is the Towards Zero Deaths, TZD, Traffic Enforcement Grant Agreement. So Councilmember Shaq.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve consent agenda items 10A, or excuse me, 11A and 11B, but also make a comment that I think these items are a great example of how we work diligently to find resources through state and federal. This happened, these happen to be state grants and help make our community safer. A lot of conversation over the past few years about public safety and the pressures on our public safety, our police and fire departments, and these kinds of things really help us move forward in a more cost efficient way. So I'm very grateful for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Shaq. Is there a second? Councilmember Remaley?
I'll second.
And are there any other comments?
Just, uh, just what Councilmember Shaq said.
All right, and then, and I just wanted to add too, kind of for the public, that the DWI Traffic Safety Officer Grant Agreement essentially funds an entire patrol officer for our police department. So I think that's why Captain Meehan is here because she is in charge of patrol. And, um, and the fact that we can have a full, a full-time officer fully covered by this grant is significant. We've gotten it for a number of years. So anyway, so we've got a motion by Councilmember Shaq and a second by Councilmember Calvert. Did I get that right? Or Remaley, excuse me, I'm sorry. Okay. That's what happens when I say too much and I forget what I did, but I apologize. So Councilmember Remaley, thank you. And Ms. Larson, would you please call roll?
Calvert?
Yes.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Weersum?
Yes, motion carries. Item 12 is introduction of ordinances, and we have two of those tonight. The first, um, 10, excuse me, item 12A is an ordinance rezoning the property at 14915 Margaret Place from I-1, industrial one, to R-1, residential one. So Ms. Thomas, I believe you have that report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And council members, this property under consideration is located at the end of Margaret Place cul-de-sac, just south of Minnetoka Boulevard and west of Williston Road. It's one of eight homes that access Margaret Place. Again, this evening, we're asking the council to introduce the ordinance and refer that rezoning to the planning commission as well as approve or modify the notification area for this project. City records indicate that the house on the property that still exists today was constructed in the mid 1950s, and that appears on the aerial photograph on the left-hand side of your screen. That lot then was included as a part of the larger industrial park plat in the early 1990s, or excuse me, 1980s. And at that time, for reasons planning staff isn't fully aware of or can't find, that property was rezoned to industrial as part of that overall industrial plat. The property's comprehensive guide plan designation was not, however, changed. And so we have a situation where we have a existing single-family home that's been in place since the 1950s and used as a residence that is zoned I-1 industrial but guided low-density residential. So the property owner has requested the city rezone the property back to residential. And that rezoning really would remove the non-conforming status of that existing home. It would reflect all of the uses that access Margaret Place. There are no other industrial uses that come off of that small cul-de-sac. It would allow the property to be used as a licensed residential care facility serving six or fewer residents, which is the goal of the owner, as I understand it. It would also prevent the industrial use of this site at the end of the cul-de-sac. And really, most importantly, from staff's perspective, it would ensure that the comprehensive guide plan and the zoning ordinance classification are consistent, which is required under state law. So again, this evening, we're requesting you introduce the ordinance and refer it to the planning commission as well as approve that notification area that's been included in your packet. I have to turn it back to the mayor and council for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. And council, any questions on this item? Kind of a unique one. Councilmember Calvert?
Thank you, Mayor. I know that there have been conversations in various communities and at the league about group home clustering. And I did talk to Mr. Funk earlier today to see sort of, you know, what other group homes do we have, you know, how many and sort of how far away.
Ms. Thomas?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Calvert, um, staff did look online today. As you know, group homes that serve six or fewer residents, the city has no review over those. And so the only way we know where they're located really is to go online to the Department of Health, Department of Human Resources, run a search, see where we have things. So we did that. There are two existing, um, facilities on Williston Road, actually off of Lake Street Extension and Williston Road intersection, and then one also at the, near the intersection of Highway 7 and Williston Road. So I would say in total, as of this snapshot in time, there's about three between, um, Williston Road and, on Williston Road, between Minnetoka Boulevard and Highway 7. And Ms. Wishnak corrected me. I think I said human resources. I said, that's health and human services.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Well, we're, let's see, if we don't have any questions, we're going to go to comments. So any other questions? Okay, then, um, Councilmember Foster Bolton?
Yeah. I mean, my concern is, is even though it may not be clustering, but it, it feels to me like we've had issues with single-family homes being turned into a facility for residential care facility with six or less people. And it's never, I mean, um, at least in my ward, and you've gotten letters too, where it's, and we have no control over it. So once, once that happens, um, then, then it's lost to us. But, but in the meantime, I mean, in the future then, people in, that are living in these homes get neglected, the houses get neglected. I mean, that's the thing I keep hearing about in, um, as residential care facilities. And this is the point where it feels like to me we have some control. I mean, cause, and, I mean, I, it doesn't make sense to, to keep it in, to keep it as I-1. But I, you know, I just need to, this is a concern that I had right away when I saw it. That, and, you know, I wish, I wish I had more control over, you know, this is the part where we do and, you know, I just don't want to see that happen again.
Other, other comments, anyone? Councilmember Wilburn?
Um, so in, in talking to Mr. Funk, he said we should share anything that we want the planning commission to look at. And so currently, we have multiple residential zoning areas. And so I'm wanting to know, are there some other, you know, R1, R2, R3, R4, mixed use? Are there other designations that would make sense for this area that would allow the, the house to be conforming?
Ms., Ms. Thomas, I don't know if you have a response for that question?
Mayor Weersum and council members, certainly something staff can take a look at. There are other zoning classifications that, that would allow for residential care facilities that would also allow for single-family homes. We would have to, you know, have some conversation. My concern would be adding a zoning classification to this neighborhood that doesn't already exist and whether or not that would be considered spot zoning, which is something we want to avoid. But certainly something that staff and the planning commission had, can explore at the planning commission meeting.
Councilmember Calvert?
So that, that just made me think, so, uh, thank you, Councilmember, um, Wilburn for bringing up that we, we need to give a little bit of direction for probing on the planning commission. And, um, the other things that, that I think about are, um, uh, the, you know, I think they need to talk about the clustering, but also because there are several along that street and we're talking about the notification area, um, I do want to make sure that we get some feedback from the neighbors because it, you know, I, I have found in my door knocking, you know, for instance, along Baker Road, we have several, and we have several right in a row, and there are some real issues happening there. And one of the, one of my neighbors, because I happen to live on Baker Road, um, you know, shared with me sort of how people walk in her backyard, smoke cigarettes in her front yard, and she said, you know, if I called the cops every time it happened, it would be, you know, all the time. And she doesn't want to call the police and, you know, they're supposed to be chaperoned, they're not chaperoned. And so just the kinds of things that I'm looking for is making sure that neighbors have a chance to provide some feedback, get some answers to their questions and concerns, and also probe a little bit, you know, sort of, if, if this is going to be a group residential facility, sort of what the plans are to mitigate and minimize some of the concerns that are happening on other properties around the city. And I'm starting to think that it may be something that, you know, we might want to discuss in a, in a study session sometime about sort of what's, sort of what's happening, you know, how are we keeping the data on, you know, police calls, other responses to residential care facilities, sort of what the reports are about, and just do some information gathering so that when we talk about what's happening, we're talking factually and in a data-based way, because these are very important. There are people that, you know, I have people in my family that need possibly a group facility, and they serve a wonderful purpose if they're well-run. So those are the kinds of things I'd love for the planning commission to explore.
Councilmember Shaq?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think we have to be really careful in this conversation because if this property were my property that was zoned incorrectly or any of ours, and I, we have to think about it that way. It is a residential property that's zoned incorrectly, and the next step of what these owners want to do with it is immaterial to the conversation about whether we're going to fix the zoning. Now, that being said, I agree with everything that was said regarding issues that we're experiencing in the community regarding group homes. And so from, from my perspective, what we really need to do is have that conversation separate from this conversation and not get ourselves into a legal pickle. And so I think this is, for Mike's notebook, a 2026 study session topic, and in fact, you know, um, even prior to that, something we may want to address in our legislative breakfast. But I'm not sure we want to send the neighborhood or the planning commission down this rabbit hole regarding this one particular property because it's really not the problem of, that's not the problem we're trying to solve. So, um, I, I totally hear everybody what they're saying, but I think we have to be really careful about how we approach this.
Thank you, Councilmember Shaq. Councilmember Remaley?
Yeah, thank you. Question before that the other comments have, have raised for me. Can I just confirm with staff, regardless of clustering or not, we, the city does not have the legal authority, or do they, to regulate the placement of group homes? Okay, so.
Six or fewer.
Six, with six or fewer. Okay, which is what this would be. So really, I have to agree with Councilmember Shaq on this, is that we can't, that this is a state law issue and this has to be addressed at the state level. And if we were to get, you know, kind of neighbors or anything involved, what we would have to tell them is that if we have a problem with this, we need to take this up at the state level because there's really not much we can do at, you know, the municipal level in terms of our ordinances or anything else at this point. So, you know, regardless of how many within whatever, you know, geographical area, we need to look at this as a larger state legislative issue. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? You know, I, as I looked at this, the question I have for staff is that, I mean, this really is a land use question. And is the, is the future use of this single-family home even relevant to what we're considering tonight? So that is, I ask that to staff because it's really land use we're discussing, correct?
Correct.
All right. So, so that was an added piece of information, but it's not really relevant to this, considering the future use is perhaps a separate conversation, but given state law and the fact that any home can be converted to a group home for six or fewer residents with absolutely no input from the city, I mean, we have been preempted on that. And, and it's state law and that's the way it is. So the group home use of this is, is not an issue for us. The, so then, as I look at this from a land use perspective, this probably should have happened a long time ago. This is an oversight. In fact, we are, we are outside state law and not, we're not conforming to state law. We should have probably fixed that a long time ago had we been aware of it. So to me, that's the real issue. This is a land use question. We should have the, the planning commission focus on that aspect of it. And then any future use should be considered. Now, if this were proposed for a group home for eight residents, then that would require a conditional use permit, and that would be a different conversation. But then I would add that, given its adjacency to an industrial district and the fact that it's non-conforming and therefore would be, require a conditional use permit, to me, this looks like a very logical place for, you know, somebody who, if they were choosing to do that. for, you know, somebody who, if they were choosing to do that. But that's, that's not what we're being asked tonight. But from a location perspective, I think it's almost ideal for a group home. But, but again, that's a separate issue. Focus on, let's ask the Planning Commission to focus on the land use and make the right decision and get us in compliance with state law, would be my perspective. So-
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may-
Ms. Wishnak?
Just on the, in the group home, I think the point is well-taken. It's really just, it was a transparency thing on our part to understand what was going to happen with the property and to share that with you. So it was just for information only. However, I, I do want to respond to folks that have concerns about it. This is more a public service announcement. If you have some issue, whether it be long grass, or maybe there's a nuisance issue, or maybe there's just a, a concern about management of a group home, we're happy to visit and talk through any of those issues with the neighborhood. Sometimes we can do things, sometimes we can't. Sometimes we just have a meeting and we visit about what the concerns are. So we're happy to do that. We don't have to call the police every time something happens, you know, but we certainly can talk through some of that. So I, I just want to put that out there, Mayor, that that is available.
Ms. Wishnak, I appreciate that. And, and I'd like to take it a little bit, just a step further, too, to remind people that when there are issues, please report them, whether it is to the police department or whether it is to our community development staff. Because the reality of it is, a problem that is not reported is not a problem. And one of the things that happens when we consider issues about, you know, or if we were to ever contact the state about licensing or anything like that, they ask for the data. And if you don't report, there is no data. And they say, well, you know, there may be a real problem here, but you know what? Nobody's complained about anything. So as far as we know, it's fully in compliance. And that does a real disservice to the residents of these facilities, who may be being abused, but with no reporting, the abuse doesn't exist. And so it's really incumbent, if there's an issue and it bugs you enough to talk to your neighbors about it, be sure to call the city and inform us about them. So then that can be recorded and hopefully corrected. So I think that's important. But pardon my preaching. Any other comments on this? Otherwise, a motion. Councilmember Wilburn?
I move that we introduce the ordinance rezoning the property at 14915 Margaret Place from I-1 to R-1 and refer it to the Planning Commission with, and include approval or modification of the notification area.
And are there any comments on the notification area from council? Are we good with what's recommended? All right, that's the motion. Is there a second? Councilmember Romailly?
A second?
All right. We've got a motion by Councilmember Wilburn and a second by Councilmember Romailly. Ms. Larson, please call roll.
Calvert?
Yes.
Romailly?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Weersum?
Yes, motion carries. Item 12B is an ordinance establishing mayor and council salaries. And Ms. Domon, I believe that's your report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be taking the report on the ordinance establishing mayor and council salaries. On the next one. So staff recommendation tonight is to introduce the ordinance, which is, requires four votes. The financial consideration, consideration, the salary adjustments will take effect in January 1st, 2026, and has already been incorporated into the proposed 2026 budget. So some background here, so state law and the city charter require that the salaries of the mayor and council members be established by ordinance. The ordinance may not take effect until after a municipal election that follows the adoption of the ordinance. The mayor and council salaries were last adjusted in the spring of 2023. They were effective January 1st, 2024. With the previous adjustment occurring in '25, again, effective date would have been January 1st, 2026. The ordinance that was adopted in 2023 had a change in it that required a biennial salary report in quarter four of every even-numbered year. And from council, that was to hopefully avoid these 10-year gaps. So by that ordinance requirement, last November, on November 4th, 2024, during a study session, staff presented that salary comparison of our 10 metro area studies to council. And based on that conversation, council consensus was, was any salary increase commensurate with non-union employees. Due to the adjustment limits of when we can approve council or mayor salaries, council would receive two years of increases at once. So it'd be a 3% cost of living for 2024, a 3% cost of living for 2025, and then up to 2% each year with market adjustments. And those were the non-union employees for the last two years. Proposed ordinance, again, would be voted on by November, but by, before the election, and then effective would take January 1st, 2026. So the mayor, with those in place, the mayor's salary would increase to $25,850 annually. The current is $23,500. Council members would increase to $19,800 annually, currently at $18,000. Next, please. And then again, staff recommendation would be the motion to introduce the ordinance. Again, four votes are needed for that. And the final ordinance adoption to be considered on October 20th, 2025. And with that, Mayor and Council, I turn it back to you for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Domon. Council, questions for staff? Councilmember Romailly?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question, since I didn't, I should have asked this previously, but I didn't. Do we have where, from that study session, where we're falling in terms of, you know, our place within the rankings? And if you don't have that, I apologize, but-
So when we did that in November 4th, 2024, we didn't have all of the updated data for 2025. From what I remember, a lot of cities were jumping and increasing.
Right.
Many cities have even-year elections, right? And so when they can do it, it's different from when municipal and the odd-year elections can do it. I don't remember the exact details, but I can truly update that chart and have it ready for October 20th.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Any other questions, Councilmember Shaq? Otherwise, you know, I, I think, seeing no questions, then let, let's move to comments, because I think there probably are a few. Councilmember Shaq?
Thank you, Mayor. Having, you know, the history of this and how we kind of came to develop the policy because it had been pretty problematic that councils before us hadn't kind of taken on the task of figuring out how to get incremental pay increases. I think it, it's well-intended, and I think the cost of living piece of it is really important, because you end up in a situation where you're lagging behind pretty significantly. I'm not so sure that the market increase piece, although we tied it to the employee indexing, is necessary or really applies the same way to council as it does to employees. That's, that's a different consideration. So I guess from my perspective, I think we have an obligation to future councils to continue with the cost of living piece. You know, I looked at the CPI today. I do a lot of cost-of-living adjustments for my work. And, you know, it's, it would fall for that two-year period if we did it mathematically, somewhere between 5% and 6% of a cost of living increase based on the Minneapolis-area CPI. My suggestion would be, as when, when this comes back, is to, to, to move it forward with cost of living increases only. And however that's calculated, I would defer to staff on that recommendation. That's my two cents. And I'll leave it at that.
Councilmember Coakley?
I will, I would like to make a comment. I know I probably was the one who addressed this with having property at the time, the lowest income. And I, I like the idea of what is suggested, because this is why I think it's important. Although my situation have changed, I think about people who want to run for city council. I really think about low-income folks who would like to serve in this position, but sometimes don't, because it does not, it's not conducive for their family, and it's, it's not a lot of income to be working in this, you know, serving as a council member. And so that was one of the main reasons I suggested. I know, I don't think the council hadn't had a, a cost of living or a increase in pay for a long time. And I apply folks that are able to do that. But I know the whole time that I've been on this council, being low-income and trying to stick with this position, I could not afford it. And so I'm not just thinking about myself, but I'm also thinking about people that may come behind after, you know, some of us are gone. Maybe there's other people in our city who want to serve on the council, but would need that extra income to make sure that they can serve, because, you know, you give up a lot when you are serving as a council member. And I know that I had to give up a lot to serve in this city. Probably didn't have a job for the last couple of years. And, you know, furthermore, it really helped me at a time that I really needed it. And so I would just encourage us to keep it the same as our city staff suggested. I know everybody may not need it, but some people really do need it for running for these type of positions. So that's my, that's my comment.
Are there other comments? Councilmember Wilburn?
There we go. Try not to be too repetitive. So I just wanted to make people aware, that people in the audience and people who may be watching, that the history, like how we got here is that, as, as alluded to, there hadn't been an increase in, I want to say since 2012. I'm not 100% sure on that. But like, it had been a long time since there had been a salary increase. And the reason that we decided to do a salary increase was for the reasons Councilmember Coakley mentioned, that it was cost prohibitive for some people to even consider running for, running for an office. Say, if you're a single parent, like you wouldn't even be able to cover the cost of childcare with the salary. So that's how we, that's why we raised our, raised our salary and why we put this into, into statute that we would review every two years and have a, have a cost of living increase. That being said, I can, I can also see where Councilmember Shaq is coming from and saying that maybe we don't need the, the full recommended, it's especially, it's, it seems like a lot when you put the 5%, when you make it 10% at once, that, that just does seem like kind of a lot. We have now moved back, I, I think we were kind of, we were trending towards the bottom of the pack, and we've moved back up into the middle as far as comparison to surrounding cities. It's still, no one's getting rich doing this, if this is your, if your only source of income. But I would, I would be supportive of maybe a slightly lower increase for, for this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilburn. Are there, are there other comments? Councilmember Calvert?
Yeah, I, I fully respect everyone's position up here. And, and so I, I understand what Councilmember Coakley is saying. And I, it also made me feel a little uncomfortable. But I do understand, you know, I have a job. I'm able to balance it. I'm not a single mother. But I do, it, it feels like, it feels like a lot. So, but I just think it's so important. First of all, I want to thank staff and my fellow council members for tackling it, because it was long overdue. Nobody had had the will. None of the previous councils had had the will to tackle it. And it was really necessary, because it is very hard to attract talent to run for city council. And you really want talented people to want to do this. And even if, even if you're like me, and you have a job, it's a lot more time than most people think. It really doesn't hinge on your life, your social life, your family life. It takes a lot of work, and you need to make it worth people's time. And even then, I mean, if we broke down how much time we all spend per hour, it would be what most people would consider chump change, because this sometimes feels like a full-time job, even though it is a part-time job. And so I just want to thank people. But I do, it does feel like, like a little much this year, especially when we're raising the levy.
Are there other comments, council members? I'll comment. What a surprise. Although, you know, for the first time in the time I've considered this, I don't have a dog in this hunt. I'm, I'm not going to be here next year. My, my council salary will be zero. But I can provide a little context, because I, I don't think it was a matter of other councils not being willing to tackle the issue. I really don't think that was it. What happened was, I mean, there was not a formal process in terms of, okay, we're going to look at it routinely like, like we put into place now. But the situation was that, you know, we went through, you know, a significant economic downturn. And the council wasn't comfortable with saying, well, you know, our residents are hurting, but give us a raise. That, that didn't seem to pass the smell test. And so the can got kicked down the road. And then that was COVID. Same story. I mean, not, a lot of people were out of work. So there were valid and intentional reasons why no action had taken place on, on council salaries, and the, and the council deferred. Well, then finally, I mean, the, the bad news is, when you, I mean, you certainly save taxpayers money when you don't take an increase. But, you know, as has been pointed out, nobody does this for the money. I don't think anybody sends their checks back, but, but nobody is in this for the money, because you can get higher-paying jobs. So, so then the question is, I mean, the, the salaries we're talking about are not high. They're, I think they're, they're reasonable. But I think one benchmark that I would like to keep in mind is, and I just throw this out as a compromise position, is keep the increase, the two-year increase below the increase of the levy. Because then it's not, then it's not, then it's not inflationary to the levy. So if our levy, our preliminary levy is 7.935%, okay, pick a number at or below that, and at least it's not an inflationary number. Because the other, the downside of not keeping pace is sometime you're going to have to catch up. And so, you know, okay, inflation's at X percent, and you're doing, you know, but you have that catch-up. So there's going to be sometime where you're going to have to take a double-digit increase to, to get caught up. And I think falling behind is, is almost as bad. But, but I think from a, from a, from a benchmark perspective, looking at with a levy increase, and is, and kind of is maybe a compromise position that recognizes inflation, but also puts you in a position where you're not going to fall too far behind. So those are my comments as somebody who does not have a dog in the hunt. Any, any, any comments or recommendations, council?
I like your idea, Mayor.
We have to vote on something.
I, I like your idea, Mayor.
I'm sorry, are we just introducing, or are we?
Yeah, we're just introducing. We're introducing, but, you know, that's what's going to get discussed, yeah. But not deciding tonight, yes. So. Any thoughts? Councilmember Shaq?
I mean, I think that, I think that's a good suggestion, and maybe we target 7% with the understanding that also staff will get us maybe a little more data on where our fellow cities are, are now, because we, we had old data that I think may not be as reflective of the current situation. We, and we're not voting on, and we're not approving anything tonight-
Right.
-so we can tweak it if we want to, based on that information.
All right. I'm seeing, I'm seeing a lot of, some good head nods here. Should we, if we could get a motion on the introduction- Should we, um, if we could get a motion on the introduction, let's get it introduced with the direction to get the added data and then consider something less than what's proposed here potentially, but, um, you're more in keeping, you know, using the, um, using the levy increase as a, as a benchmark and therefore not being inflationary. Is that a fair summary? Councilmember Calvert?
Thank you, Mayor. I will make that motion to introduce the ordinance asking for more data for our coming decision-making meeting and, um, uh, to consider the levy as a benchmark.
Is there a second? Councilmember Foster-Bolton?
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion by Councilmember Calvert and a second by Councilmember Foster-Bolton. Um, Ms. Larson, please call roll.
Calvert?
Yes.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster-Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
We're some.
Yes, motion carries. Um, item 13 is public hearings and we've got two public hearings tonight. Um, the first is a temporary on-sale license for Boom Island Brewing Company located at 5959 Baker Road, Suite 320. And, um, Ms. Wischnack, that's your report.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Just a short report here, there is a Fall Fest planned at the Boom Island Brewery on October 25th. They do have kind of an afternoon, more family-friendly event that they would hold at 4:00 PM and then, uh, a little bit more adult, uh, starting at 6:00 to 10:00 PM. Uh, they have kind of a plan to close off the access into the parking area as they always do when they have events. Um, and then, uh, they would also have music that would end at the appropriate time, which is 10:00 PM. And, uh, we have not had any complaints in the past about their events and so, uh, staff would recommend that the, uh, city council hold the hearing and then approve the license. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Wischnack. Um, Council, first, uh, any questions of staff on this item? I think it's pretty straightforward. All right, I'm not seeing any questions. So, um, I will open the public hearing and ask anyone who would like to come up and comment and, um, it looks like someone from Boom Island may be here, so maybe, yeah, this is an opportunity to do a little advertising too, so tell us about your event, please.
Definitely. Thank you, uh, Ms. Wischnack and, uh, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Laura McCully, I'm the co-owner and events manager for Boom Island Brewing. Um, as Ms. Wischnack said, we have a Fall Fest going on, um, from noon until four that day on the 25th of October. Um, we'll have a car show, pumpkin painting, um, just a lot of fun, family-friendly activities to celebrate the season. And then later on in the evening, we will transition into what we're calling Drink or Treat. It is an adult version of trunk-or-treating and we actually have invited five other breweries from the local area to come and join us with their own, um, tents and sampling setups. It's a beer sampling event, um, to celebrate the Halloween season. Um, that portion of the event is ticketed, however, the rest of the brewery will be open, um, unticketed, so it's free to attend in general. Sampling is, um, ticketed and of course ID checks will be happening throughout the day. Um, any questions for anyone here?
Council, any questions?
Yeah.
Councilmember Maylie?
Our costumes are required.
Not required, but they are encouraged. We will have contests. Yes.
And then give us the dates, the date again, so.
Yes. Saturday, October 25th.
25th, okay.
Twenty-five, yeah.
Very good. Very good. Council, any other questions? Thank you very much. I will ask if there's anyone else who wants to comment on that, but I'm not seeing anyone. Thanks for being here tonight. So I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for action. Councilmember Remaley?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'll make the motion to grant the temporary liquor license to Boom Island Brewing Company at 5959 Baker Road, Suite 320.
And a second, Councilmember Calvert?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to put, put in a plug because people that wear costumes to Boom Island wear really good costumes. I'm just saying, they do. So I think I was there for St. Patrick's Day, maybe, and it was very, very cool.
Thanks for coming.
So anyway, I will second.
All right, we've got a motion by Councilmember Remaley and a second by Councilmember Calvert. Um, Ms. Larson, please call roll.
Calvert?
Yes.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster-Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
We're some.
Yes, motion carries. The next item, uh, 13B is Resolutions Approving Special Assessments for the 2024, 2025 Projects. And Ms. Melanie Putz, our assessor, is here to, uh, um, make that report. So welcome, Melanie.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm here to talk about the resolutions approving the special assessments for the 2024 and 2025 projects. Can you hear me okay?
We can. Does it, can we make that go up a little higher for you? There we go. Thanks.
Okay. So staff recommends we hold the public hearing and then ultimately make a motion to approve or adopt the resolutions pertaining to the special assessments of one, three, and five-year term nuisance abatements. So a quick summary, this is an annual process that we hold the public hearing to approve the collection of these special assessments. Typically, um, we hear nuisance, property nuisance, abatements, diseased trees, and city court fines. Um, division staff associated with each type of the assessment notify and work with property owners prior to this timeline for the work being done by the city and financed through the city. Notices to the public were mailed, um, after the August 25th council meeting and that's where we set this public hearing date. And property owners will have 30 days to pay or partially pay their assessment's interest fee after today. There is a total of four, um, nuisance abatements this year totaling just under $6,400. There are two one-year terms, one three-year term and one five-year term, so relatively few. And interest rates are set based on the US prime rate of 7.25%. Um, that's reflecting the, um, decrease earlier this month. And staff have received no appeal notifications from the property owners appearing in the resolutions. So again, we recommend, um, to hold the public hearing and make a motion to adopt resolutions pertaining to the special assessments of the one, three, and five-year term nuisance abatements.
All right. And ju, and just for clarification, so we're going to each, do each of these separately, correct? Is that correct? Or, or do we do them all? Mr. Nelson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I think in this case with, uh, the fact that there are only four, I think you can open the floor up for any individual that would like to address.
All right. Very good. So, um, so, well, I mean, these, these are the nuisance ones and then we'll go on and do each one, each of those individually. That's what I meant, so I didn't ask my question, my, my question wasn't clear. So, all right, I will open the public hearing to ascertain, is there anyone here who would like to speak to these, um, one, three, or five-year nuisance abatements? Is there anyone? I don't see anyone. So I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for comment or, uh, Councilmember Calvert?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm happy to move approval of, uh, to adopt the resolutions pertaining to the special assessment of one, three, and five-year nuisance abatements.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Remaley?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll second.
All right, a motion by Councilmember Calvert and a second by Councilmember Remaley. Um, Ms. Larson, please call roll.
Calvert?
Yes.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster-Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
We're some.
Yes, motion carries. Ms. Putz, we, are we, are we done? That's it? Okay, very good. Thank you. So, next item is, um, other business and, uh, um, 14A is the Villas at Chasewood, HIA Call for Sale of Bonds. And is, oops, Ms. Wischnack, am I doing that wrong?
I'm doing the report.
Okay, very good. I'm, excuse me.
That's all right.
All right, thank you. So Ms. Wischnack, um, take it away.
Thank you. Uh, this is a follow-up. If you don't remember, we had a housing improvement area that was approved earlier this year. We let you know we'd be back when the bonds were ready to be issued and so that is what we were, what we are here to do tonight. Um, the motion we'll be asking for after the presentation is to adopt the resolution for the amount of $8,080,000 and we do need four votes to pass that. Um, as you recall, this is just some of the reasons why we did the HIA originally. The association asked the city to help with their improvement projects. It is not something the city goes out and solicits from people, they asked the city. And so we, um, knew that there was, uh, sheathing issues, framing issues, uh, they had explored all kinds of different financing options. And, uh, so it's been a few years since they contacted us, which was, uh, at this point three years ago. And so you looked at it in January, in February, and March, and then in June, they had the last day of prepayments that homeowners could make, uh, their prepayments for the pending assessment. This chart is, um, good news for the association and for those owners. Uh, it's came, the numbers came in better than what was originally anticipated and really that equates to not using their contingency. They had a pretty heavy contingency budget of 1.5 million. And so you can see the estimated costs in the one column equaled about 12.2 million. The final cost came in at about 10.8 million. Um, 49 owners did prepay their assessment and so that brought in about 3.3 million. And, um, basically, again, that good news is about people's assessments went down and, uh, they're in a much better situation than probably we thought in the early months of the year. So they are, what happened is they had this construction loan, that's what was floating the construction this whole time. The agreement with the city was when that construction loan was ready to be monetized into a bond, that's when, um, we step in with the bond issuance. So the bond term is 21 years, it has an interest rate of 7%, although the actual interest rate won't be known until the actual sale occurs, so that is forthcoming. As an aside, it does not count against our bank qualification limit of $10 million. Um, and then the call for bond issuance, again, is 8,800,000. Um, and then the city will repay the bonds through its housing improvement fees, which are collected similar to a special assessment. And there were some questions in terms of the, what if people don't pay, uh, what if the city doesn't get payments from owners? So the situations that, uh, the city could face, for instance, if somebody didn't pay their taxes, right? Or it went into even more serious situation where it goes into tax forfeiture. And we talked about this early on too. The, the city might have to float that amount while they wait for the taxes to be paid, but the, the way the bond's designed is to have that room in, in case of non-payment. Eventually the city gets paid because that property transfers at some point in the future. Taxes are paid and then the, the fees are paid. So the risk for non-payment is pretty small and the bond anticipates some amount of issue that, that would cause non-payment. So hopefully that helps answer that question. And again, it's a pretty simple request, the resolution is for the housing improvement bonds at 8,800,000. Uh, staff does recommend approval. Mayor, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Ms. Wischnack. Council, any questions on that? Councilmember Shaq?
Thank you, Mayor. I meant to ask this to Mike this morning. It's, I think it's an easy question. The people who prepaid, how do they get their, um, overpayment credited to them?
Yes. Mayor and Councilmember Shaq, um, there is a calculation at the end of the bond issuance, they are repaid the overage that they paid. Um, with this many prepayments, it's a little tedious, but, um, that is part of the process. This happened in Cloud Nine as well. We had a lot of prepayments there, uh, very similar issue. And their numbers came in lower, so. We're used to it, it's just, it is a lot of work, yes.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Councilmember Calvert?
Thank you, Mayor. I asked Mr. Funk this question earlier, so my question is, you know, there, there are inflationary pressures and some economic uncertainty and, you know, when we do projects, we have contingency. So they opted not to use the, the, the portion of the cost, uh, associated with the contingency, which looks like is about 1.4 million. And, um, what happens if there's a contingency then?
Ms. Wischnack?
Mayor and Councilmember Calvert, so at this point, we would not have brought the project to you for bond issuance if we didn't know the total cost. So we have to know those total costs, all the bills are in, all of the contractors' fees are in, anything that's outstanding against the project is complete. That doesn't mean construction's totally complete, but the bills are complete. And so that's when we bring it to you, they did not need that contingency. So it's not, it's a little bit different than, I'm trying to think of, uh, an opposite situation. Sometimes when you look at road projects, you're seeing a project in advance, right? And you don't, you know, there's contingency there and then the budget reflects the actual costs spent. Here we see when, before, during, and after. I mean, so you're seeing it at all levels and this is the end result.
Got it. Thank you. Very helpful. And Mayor, I have one more question. So, uh, I also asked Mr. Funk this earlier. Um, we had gotten contacted by someone, um, a resident there, I assume, talking about how, I think someone that, that buys now does not have the ability to prepay. And so I just wanted to, uh, uh, help folks understand, once again, sort of, that there were good reasons that were explained before, but I just thought it might be worth exploring one more time.
Ms. Wischnack?
Mayor and Councilmember Calvert, uh, the reason why prepayments cannot continue is because the city is issuing debt. And again, I know you know all of this, but perhaps people listening might not understand. So once the debt issuance is complete and the payments start to flow, we have to be assured that we can pay off that bond over time. If, if people start to prepay at various stages of that bond repayment, we could be short our bond payment in, say, year 19 or 20 because the prepayment has already happened. So, um, hopefully that makes sense. Uh, it's, it's, it's not like a mortgage per se, um, because in a mortgage, there's an out, um, with the bonding situation, there's not. I do have in my head, you know, at some point, does it get refinanced? Maybe. Could that open up prepayments? Sure. Um, it just depends on what the bonding market is as we move through the next 20 years. So hopefully that helps.
Thank you. That helps a lot.
Thank you. Anything else? Anyone? You know, just looking at the chart that's in front of us, um, you know, the total project costs were 1.4 million dollars less. And if you go down the list, you can see that it was construction costs, which is miscellaneous labor, mobilization, rigging, and contingency. I mean, that's where, that's where all the savings took place and that's where most of the 1.4 million is. So that's, um, that's, that's good news in my book. So they got it done for less than they had themselves covered for. All good. So, um, with that, um, let's see, is there, I guess we have to, um, let's see, um, you know, I guess we need a motion. Thank you. Or, 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 go ahead.
Just a quick comment and I'll be happy to make the motion as well. Just wanted to reiterate for those folks who, you know, may be watching or at some point, uh, watching, that the reason that we, we undertook this was because we had, uh, over 100, I can't remember how many units there are in that.
188.
188, thank you. Um, that are naturally occurring affordable housing and, you know, this was helping, uh, us to, as a city, preserve those units so that development did not fail. And we did not risk as a city losing those naturally occurring affordable housing, um, you know, kind of owner condo units. And, uh, there's some, uh, housing, uh, type that is in very short supply in terms of ownership and, uh, so I, I just want to congratulate the community development staff. And so I just want to congratulate the community development staff for, you know, undertaking this and helping preserve and, you know, my colleagues on council for voting to approve this because it's something that's very necessary and I think a very good use of our credit rating. And again, reminding people that this isn't something that is going to cost the city anything. This is, you know, essentially a loan that will be repaid over time. So, thank you. And I will make the motion to adopt the resolution providing for the sale of housing improvement bonds in the amount of 8,080,000 dollars.
Thank you, Councilmember Remaley. Councilwoman Calvert?
I'll second, and I also second what Councilmember Remaley just said.
Yeah, and just, just to add, just a little bit, but, you know, when we first started doing HIAs, it seemed, and it was about, what, 10 or 15 years ago? It seemed like, well, we're helping people out, that's a nice thing. But as we've gotten some experience with it, it's, it's a real important tool in the toolbox of preserving affordable housing. And particularly at a time when condos are not being built because of other legislative issues, you know, preserving what we've got are important and finding ways to get more are important. But HIAs are really a valuable tool that I'm really proud of the fact that Minnetoka has been one of the leaders in the utilization. And so hats off to our staff and their efforts because we have preserved literally hundreds of affordable homes in Minnetoka. And, you know, preserving is way better than building. So, so with that, we've got a motion and a second. Ms. Larson, please call roll.
Calvert?
Yes.
Remaley?
Yes, and I forgot to give a shout out to our finance department, Mr. Nelson as well, who is, I'm sure, involved in this. So, yes.
Cokeley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shack?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Weersum?
Yes, motion carries. Item 14B is a request to provide water and sewer service to an unaddressed Eden Prairie property generally located south of Yellow Circle Drive and north of Highway 62. And Ms. Thomas, that's your report.
Thank you, Mayor Weersum. This evening, staff is requesting feedback on this request. There's actually no formal action for the council to take. There's no specific process or procedure to, to follow. For over 40 years, Minnetoka has provided roadway access and public sewer and water to two properties in Eden Prairie. They're labeled here as 6130 and 6101, Blue Circle Drive. The sites are really physically connected to the Opus development. They're separated from the city of Eden Prairie by Highway 62. In 1977, the two cities entered into a joint powers agreement. And under that agreement, Eden Prairie contributed to the costs of inputting that public infrastructure to these sites. Moving forward, Minnetoka has been responsible for maintaining the roadway and the public portion of the utilities, together with covering the costs to do so. And we do read the water meters and then bill those property owners directly. There is still a vacant parcel to the west that was not included in the 1977 joint powers agreement. It has frontage on Yellow Circle Drive. It lacks sewer and water. At Eden Prairie recently formally requested that the city of Minnetoka provide those utilities to the site, again, through a joint powers agreement. The request is based on a concept plan that Eden Prairie recently received. The plan suggests construction of about 200 units, rental units, on the property. It's about three and a half acres in total size. In reviewing the request, staff has determined that we do have capacity as currently constructed. Our utility is currently constructed in the area. Specifically, the water distribution system is adequate in the area. And the sewer system, as is noted here, has 50% capacity remaining in that sewer shed, which is generally, or I should say specifically, outlined with a darker black line. So a portion of Opus is in the same sewer shed. We're calculating that a 200-unit building would reduce the capacity in that sewer shed by about 5%, meaning that 45% of that capacity would remain for other development or redevelopment in the area. The A U A R that was conducted for the overall Opus area did look at kind of maximum buildout and these numbers are based on that maximum buildout. As I stated before, there is no specific procedural step that's required this evening. We're simply requesting comments, feedback on this request to provide sewer and water. Specifically, is the council interested in proceeding with a joint powers agreement? If so, what concerns and issues do you have, if any, so that Minnetoka staff and Eden Prairie staff can discuss those as we draft an agreement, which would ultimately have to come back, obviously, to the council for your consideration and approval? Or alternatively, is the council not inclined to proceed with a joint powers agreement for utilities here? And with that, I would turn it back to the council. I can stand for questions, but Ms. Wishnak and Mr. Manchester are also available.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Thomas. And I will turn to my councilmembers and see if you have any questions. And it looks like Councilmember Wilburn has some.
Well, I can frame it as a question. So my only concern is if we, if there were, say, to be more growth than anticipated in the Opus area and we get to a, a place where we need to redo sewer or, you know, make some changes to capacity, that can we have it in the agreement that Eden Prairie would pay part of those costs?
Mr. Manchester.
Yeah, I'm Councilwoman Wilburn, mayor and council. I might defer to Mr. Nelson, but, I mean, certainly that's the feedback we're looking for tonight. I mean, those are always possibilities, but I don't know if Eric has anything to add.
Sure. Mr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Wilburn. Of course, when you're looking at a joint powers agreement and the nature of a negotiation, anything is really possible in that realm. I just will note that I think it's perhaps a bit unlikely, too, because as mentioned by Susan Thomas, the, the environmental review that was conducted initially here, the alternative urban area-wide review, A U A R, studies a full max buildout scenario that maximizes all of the development potential based on the comp plan guidance for the area. And so it looks at that and, and models that. And so the numbers that have been referenced here are those max, max scenario numbers. So I think it's unlikely, although, again, we also are talking about a 1977 joint powers agreement. And so if you're looking, you know, that long ahead in the future, who knows what will happen.
Very good. Other questions, council? Councilmember Shack?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things that I've been thinking about, you know, there's that concept of kind of being neighborly and, and we want to do what is most efficient environmentally. I guess my question is two-part. Is it, one, is there ever a scenario, especially with all this conversation about how great Eden Prairie is doing on their budget? A scenario where we ask for something in return, one. And two, I'd like to have, and, and, it doesn't have to be precise, but I assume there are areas throughout the city where perhaps we are using services from another city. You know, are, is this kind of one of these things where we, it's kind of like customary that cities will do this or is this unusual?
Ms. Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, I'll start and my colleagues may jump in. There are certainly other areas in the city that I can think of in my time with the city that have undergone development on our fringes where we have provided these services to other communities. I think of Deep Haven, Greenwood, those smaller communities along the lake. Off the top of my head, I can't think of anything that's occurred in my 24 years with the city where Minnetoka has, in those years, sought services from another community. That doesn't mean there aren't, but they would predate my time.
And Mr. Manchester, do you have something to add?
Yeah, just to add to that, Councilmember Shack, mayor, council. You know, Public Works specifically, we partner a lot with our adjacent cities. I mean, for example, you know, Eden Prairie, there's boundaries when we pave roads and different things. I mean, do we get out and measure everything? I mean, there's, sometimes there's areas, Eden Prairie specifically has, you know, done some paving in Minnetoka for us on other projects, as we have for them. And so Hopkins, all the cities around us. So there's definitely things that we, services specifically, I mean, nothing's coming to mind, but I'm sure there's stuff out there we've, we've done before. I'll try to think of some.
And then, Mr. Funk, excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I would just add to what staff has already mentioned. It was about a year and a half ago where the city of Edina did reach out to the city of Minnetoka to extend utility services not too far from this area. If you go a little further north, up 169, there was a property, again, in Edina that was looking at a housing development. And they were looking to, again, I use the word tap into our utility infrastructure, just it was more feasible for them to, we're closer. And it's more logistical challenges in Edina. And bottom line is, that project didn't come to fruition, but nonetheless, that was still a conversation we had with one of our neighbors. The other thing I would also reference is, and this is coming up at your October study session, Ms. Wishnak will talk to you about the planning that's been happening with the city of Hopkins around the light rail station. So I, I mean, in some ways, this is similar where you've got a neighboring city, we've got an area that we have perhaps a shared interest in, just like we do with the city of Hopkins around their Shady Oak Station. And so two cities can get together, do some visioning process and come to, you know, just some understanding of what will take place in those areas. That happened on this in 1977. And so here we are, again, you know, 50-some years later, looking at a shared boundary and potential development in that space. So just some more history in terms of, there are things around their borders where we do have some interest with our neighboring cities. And we've always gotten along very well with our cities in terms of those common interests and working together on making sure both cities end up in a situation where everyone feels good about that development project.
Thanks, Mr. Funk. Councilwoman Remaley, I know you have something.
No, I just have a couple of questions mostly, and I think I asked some of those this morning, one, in my conversation with Mr. Funk. And so if that was sent to me, I, sorry, I missed. It was, okay. Well, can I ask them anyway? Yeah, okay, great. So one of my questions was how many units, what, what is the makeup, the composition of those adjacent properties at 6130 and 6101 right now? Are they also apartment buildings? What are they? Are they commercial?
Ms. Thomas?
Mayor and council, they are office industrial properties at 6130 and 6101. 6130 is undergoing redevelopment right now. This aerial that you see is actually a very recent aerial. So these are the two new, in, more industrial warehouse properties being constructed on that site.
And, thank you. I appreciate that. And so when we talk about, you know, us extending our infrastructure, does that mean that, you know, basically, they would do the construction or the developer would do that and then just tie into our existing infrastructure or would be, be responsible for kind of providing that infrastructure?
Yeah, again, I'll start and my colleagues may jump in, but just as any development in our community, the developer is typically responsible for the installation and the costs of the installation. And that would be, I would assume the case here, the city would be responsible for the ongoing maintenance of the public portions of the infrastructure. Typically, those public portions are in the streets themselves or just adjacent to the streets. The developer is responsible for everything on their own property.
And so those, that infrastructure is already existing, going passover? Okay. Good to know. And so basically, we have pipe going along or infrastructure going along that street, I assume, Yellow Circle or wherever we have that. And those buildings are tying into that. On the other side of that yellow circle or blue circle drive is Minnetoka, so our pipes are there anyway. And so they would just be tying into that. Sorry if this is getting a little bit into the weeds here. And so right now, you know, we would be paying for maintenance of that infrastructure regardless. And so there's, wouldn't be really any cost to us. It's just the water capacity at this point. Is that correct?
Yeah, Councilmember Remaley, mayor and council, correct. You know, the developer would be responsible to extend a private service to their site and they would dump essentially into those. So yeah, it would essentially be the treatment or the water capacity, but there's no city really, really city infrastructure itself. It's a private service extension.
Right, except for the fact that we have to maintain the public lines that are going right there, but which are also serving Minnetoka properties adjacent across the street.
Yep, correct.
All right. And, and, and does our water and utility fees to those residents fully cover, you know, all costs, you know, for monitoring and things like that, where it's not like we're losing funding that our taxpayers aren't subsidizing? Is that fair to say?
Councilwoman Remaley, correct. I mean, essentially, the, the infrastructure is there.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
All right. Other, Councilwoman Calvert?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few questions. So, you know, it's so complicated because it's not our property, so we can't tell them, you know, I have no idea if there are affordable units going in there. So I don't know what kind of public benefit there is, for instance. And I'm looking at all of those, I mean, really, there's kind of drastic tree loss. You know, we don't control their tree ordinances. And so I do know in reading the packet about the adjacent property, which is an industrial property, that the soils are clayey. And we're going to be losing all of the trees there that suck up a lot of water. And so my concern is a little bit about eye and eye because the soils are bad in that part of the city and we're, there'll be significant tree loss there and addition of impervious surface. And so I'm just wondering, you know, what, what we might be able to anticipate in terms of cost there or what we can ask Eden Prairie to do to make sure that there aren't costs to the city with that? And I'm also wondering, I'm assuming that Eden Prairie will pay the SAC fees? So those are the kinds of questions, sort of.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes. Go ahead, Ms. Wishnak, please.
Councilmember Calvert, I think it's important to point out, when we had 6130 connecting, that was already covered by the old agreement, but American Family was there. So it was a pretty developed site. Little bit different situation than what we have with this property, right? Kind of untouched, natural. However, it's just like our property in Minnetoka, you have to do all the right things with infrastructure for stormwater, et cetera. But if that's an issue you want addressed by the joint powers agreement, we can add that to the list of things to talk to them about. I think I would phrase it more in the, what additional impact to the services of Minnetoka in terms of stormwater, I think is what you were getting at.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we have that on the list. Thank you.
All right, council, are there other questions that anyone's thought of? Councilwoman Remaley?
And again, Mr. Funk, I apologize if this has already been sent. We had talked about a few other options this morning that I had just brought up and I don't know if staff has already thought of these or if they're worth pursuing or even considering. You know, you know, potentially a, a property or a land swap, since that's such a little alcove that, you know, we're doing all the services for, it's cut off from the rest of Eden Prairie, whatever, that would, you know, kind of give us a little bit more control if that would be something worth considering or pursuing or at least discussing. You know, I understand that's been done in a few other instances recently, so just didn't know if that was something to consider.
Ms. Wishnak?
Mayor and Councilmember Remaley, there are a couple of situations that come to mind. And one of them is directly
And one of them is directly south of here. We had a Starbucks on the south side of 62 that used to be in Minnetonka. And we had an annexation detachment agreement with the City of Minnetonka. That was a fairly straightforward transaction because that was all south of 62, and it made sense from a service standpoint, et cetera. Thank you, Susan. She's pointing out where the Starbucks is. Thank you. The other situation I can think of is Hopkins, right at Main Street and Shady Oak Road. There was that little piece as you come into the Shady Oak Apartments where we did a land swap. We did that with the subway. So Hopkins got subway. We were able to get the piece for the developer so that the jurisdiction would be all Minnetonka. The site here doesn't lend itself really to a swap. I can't think of any, I know almost every parcel of the 24,000 parcels in Minnetonka, and I can't think of one that would make sense to swap out for this parcel in terms of what could be detached. Because it's all about fairness, right? What's the property value? What's the new value of the development and so forth? And that's exactly how we did it with Hopkins. It was an even swap, if you will. I don't know of any other property along this stretch or even near Eden Prairie that could be swapped out. Otherwise, I think I would, I think we would have gone down that path already, but.
Okay, thank you. Are we providing, I'm sorry, are we providing other services besides kind of infrastructure, water, sewer, road?
Oh, public safety is one thing I think you mentioned in your email and fire service. In the past, what's happened when we have situations like this, oftentimes the police department, the fire department will sit down with their public safety partners in those cities, and they will decide on how to adequately serve the properties. Now, I think a lot of Opus is answered by Minnetonka, but occasionally there might be an issue where they have, both departments might be called in a situation like this. It just depends. But they talk about that depending on how the jurisdiction is. In the end, what happens? They don't really give opinions on whether or not to have services, how they provide service when the transaction is complete. So.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I've got a, I've got a few. And I, Ms. Funk and I spent quite a bit of time talking about this. And we, we talked about, okay, is there, you know, land swaps and annexations and detachments and things like that. And, you know, and, you know, I mean, to me, it'd be great if we got the whole little crescent here, but I just don't see that as being practical. And one of the questions I had, however, was earlier when this was being reported upon, we heard that, I mean, this 1977 deal, so that's 48 years ago, the Eden Prairie paid for quite a bit of the infrastructure associated with 6130 and 6101. And so as far as this, on this parcel without an address, that is the subject of our conversation now, how would that work? What did Eden, what did Eden Prairie pay for on the existing parcels? And what would they be expected to pay for in this to, to, you know, consummate the deal and make sure that if this is Eden Prairie, then Eden Prairie is paying for what they should be paying for and we're, we're connecting but to their infrastructure? So, you know, what makes it apples to apples versus what happened in 1977 is my question. And I don't know if we know the answer, but that's a question maybe in the negotiation that, you know, I'd like to have some clarity on.
Yeah, Mayor, I don't know the specific answer, but I do recall having read the 77 joint powers agreement, it was based on a percentage of the total costs. This whole area was being built out, so it was what was Eden Prairie's percentage of the larger area. And they contributed that same percentage then to total cost.
All right, and that makes, that makes sense. And I don't need to know the formulas, but that's helpful. And then the other question I had was, you know, when we, when we get affordable housing, we talk about a 30-year term. And, you know, we know that as time passes, I mean, 6130, we're talking 48 years ago. And are we talking about providing services into perpetuity? Or are we talking about services for a finite period of time? And if so, what would we recommend? Would it be 30 years? Would it be 50 years? Would it be more? You know, I have my doubts that going beyond 50 years is really something that isn't our best interest because of the, of the uncertainties associated with what's the world going to look like in 50 years. But, you know, with agreements like this elsewhere, are time limitations ever put on them? Or is it something that, no, you do it and you own it and it's perpetual? So those are my questions.
Mr. Mayor, I think we can look more into the timing of it, but it isn't like an easement, right?
Right.
Which is more of a 30-year horizon. Joint powers can end at certain points, so that's allowed. But whether you'd want to and the person receiving the service would want to agree to that, that's a whole nother matter.
Right.
I think we can put it on our list of questions.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's, you know, that's it. I don't anticipate an answer tonight, but I do, you know, it is a question that I want to, that I'd want to ask just to protect the interests of taxpayers in the future. So, so this is not an action item. And we shared quite a bit of perspective and a good number of questions. I mean, I'd ask staff, is there anything else that you would like us to do? I know that Julie Eddington is on the line, I believe, for a, I was told right here that Julie Eddington is available to provide on this item. So.
I think that was for the HIA item, Mayor, but.
Well, but it says, it says this, well, the item description is different because it's specifically this one.
Got it.
So.
We haven't been dealing with her on that, so I don't.
Okay, okay, that's good. You know, I thought it was the HIA thing too. But then this little form that I get at each meeting says, request to provide water and sewer service to an unaddressed Eden Prairie parcel.
We apologize.
Generally located, so.
Yeah, we apologize. So that shouldn't have been.
Okay, so that, okay. So I'm, pardon my, I was confused for a valid reason.
Of course.
Thank you. All right. So then, so never mind Julie, or Julie Eddington or Julie Wischnack, but Mr. Funk.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think as you're wrapping up this conversation, just I want to get a sense, staff would want to get a sense if you're generally supportive of continuing the conversation with Eden Prairie. I think that's yes, but I think that would be helpful for staff just to get that general sense from you. As Ms. Wischnack mentioned a few minutes ago, we're keeping a list of some of the things you've said here this evening, and that's, we'll use that to continue our conversations with Eden Prairie, such as, I think you've mentioned, well, again, a number of options. I would add, and that, you know, from, I think, from a city perspective, we've been really good neighbors. And so if the roles were reversed, we would certainly want cooperation from our neighboring city. And so I think we want to approach it in that same manner. That being said, we still want to make sure we're looking out for our taxpayer interests. And one of the things that just occurred to me that I want to further vet out with our staff, as you think about where this property is located, we are likely providing snow plowing services for people that go in and out of those sites, perhaps police and fire services. Of course, we have mutual aid agreements. So I certainly want to talk with our staff a little bit further in terms of just the amount of city services provided, because really, this is landlocked in the City of Minnetonka. So there are some, probably some ancillary benefits they're receiving. Certainly don't want to hold that against our neighboring city, but I think there might be an avenue to pursue in terms of like a payment and move of taxes, just some sort of type of recognition for the services that we're providing for the development of these parcels. So I think that's just further, I see your head shaking, so I think that'd be something too we'd want to add to our list and further have conversation about.
Thank you, Mr. Funk. I think that's a good summary. Is there, is there anything contrary to that that council members would, would want to add?
There's nothing contrary. I just think, I think the whole idea is, you know, people often remark it, the difference between the levees in Eden Prairie and Minnetonka. And so I just do want to make sure that we are protecting the interests of our taxpayers. So I appreciate Mr. Funk's comments just now. And also, we did talk earlier about something that was mentioned here on the dais as well, which is, you know, sort of in the joint powers agreement exploring, you know, fairness and making sure that we're keeping up. Because although we have existing sewer lines, we're adding, we're diminishing our own capacity, and that is added use, which is in some ways wear and tear on our infrastructure. And so, you know, we're the people that are going to be providing that. And I know that they pay for the service. I just want to make sure that in the end, we come out whole.
Very, very good. Well, thanks. I think, I think we covered it perhaps more than we, than you wanted us to. But, you know, I mean, I think it goes back to the notion that we are good neighbors. And, you know, this is kind of a unique, I mean, I certainly wouldn't mind finding this, this entire crescent in the City of Minnetonka because Highway 62 makes, is a logical dividing between the cities. But I don't see that as being practical at this time. But, but who knows? There may come a time when there is an opportunity to swap, and it may make sense at some future time. But I don't think that should hold this up at this juncture. My personal view.
Agreed.
So we'll, we'll move on if we, so we are moving just to items, appointments and reappointments. And we have two, two of those. The first is the DEI Commission Young Adult Appointment. And Mr. Funk, do you have that, or do I take that?
Either one, Mr. Mayor, however you want to approach it. These are appointments being brought forward by your recommendation. So if you want to touch on those, I'd be happy to as well.
I'll just, you know, a couple of things. I've had quite a few conversations with other cities and how they do youth appointments, because sometimes we've had, we've been challenged. And, you know, speaking of Eden Prairie, I talked to Ron Casey, the mayor there, and he said, you know, if we have kids who want to be on a border commission or young adults who want to be on a border commission, we just say yes. And I'd, you know, and, and I think, you know, from a process perspective, that makes, you know, it's not like we have dozens and dozens of people that are applying. So, you know, I think that, that idea has merit. But I did speak with Mohammed Omar, a young man, very bright young man who is strongly interested in being in our DEI Commission. And so I recommend his appointment to the DEI Commission. So that's, Councilmember Shack?
I will second that.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Or Ms. Larson, would you please call roll?
Calvert?
Yes.
Romailly?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shack?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Weersum.
Yes, motion carries. And then 15B is the subject of our addendum. And, you know, Mr. Funk, I can let you take that one since your name is on it, but it concerns the EDAC. So I'll turn it to you if you wouldn't mind.
Absolutely.
And then we'll take it from there.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. As the mayor just noted, item 14, excuse me, 15B, it relates to a appointment to the Economic Development Advisory Commission. We do have a mid-year vacancy. And we've typically handled those, just depending on circumstances, if it's early in the year, we might defer to the application pool that we had earlier this year. If it's later in the year, sometimes we'll, we'll leave it open until the next recruitment process starts, which is going to be here right around the corner. With the current vacancy, we do have some business coming up, and we're concerned about quorum. And so in talking, our staff talking with Mayor Weersum about that appointment, we are recommending, or at least, I'm sorry, not we, the mayor is recommending appointment of the Jeannie Pebbles to the EDAC to fill a vacancy effective starting September 30th, 2025, expiring on January 31st, 2026. I think the mayor has spoken to Ms. Pebbles and can speak to that. We did look back at our application pool. Those applications were provided to the mayor based on the interviews that we had done earlier this year. So it was, so when you interviewed, and they were in essence kind of next on the list in terms of our ranking and criteria. I know the mayor again reached out to, out to her, and maybe it's turned over to you, Mayor, based on your recommendation then. So that's.
Right. And I can just add a little color to that. Thank you. I think you covered it well. Yeah, I, I went down the list in the order that the council had voted. And we had two individuals that were under consideration. I looked at both applications, and I contacted Ms. Pebbles, and she expressed an enthusiasm for being part of the EDAC. So I think we should move with that, and that's my recommendation. So if there's a second, we'll get that done. Councilmember Romailly?
I'll second.
All right. We've got a motion and a second by Councilmember Romailly. Ms. Larson, please call roll.
Calvert?
Yes.
Romailly?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shack?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Weersum.
Yes, motion carries. And if I made a mistake earlier and said that was 14B, it's 15B. But so to be accurate there. So then that brings us to item 16, adjournment. And Ms., our Councilmember Wilburn?
I move adjournment.
And Councilmember Calvert?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Wilburn, a second by Councilmember Calvert. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.